Morning, everybody. Staff meeting Tuesday, February the 11th. Got a good one planned. Manager Stoltz, take it away.
Good to do. Thank you, Chairman and Commission. Today is a briefing of a subject matter that will come back up on the walk in the future. It's the the summation or the final, or is it draft yet, Rusty? Still draft yet? Or is it final? Okay. Draft of a analysis from the Stedman Group. And let me just give you a little bit of a history. This goes all the way back to 2017, 2018, where there were going to, there was lawsuits starting around the country on some of the opioid manufacturers and distributors. Sedgwick County during that time period was one of the first counties, maybe the first county in the state of Kansas that actually signed on to that lawsuit. And then over time, the AG's office became involved and the state kind of took the lawsuit over. But in the end, we discussed this a number of times in staff meeting. And what was clear was that we would get over time, millions of dollars of settlement money, as would the city of Wichita. And the commission at the time made the decision, it might be best if the city and the county worked together to distribute this money in a the most efficient and effective manner to help the most in the community. So that's where the Stedman Group got involved. We went out for an RFP and they became the consultant to lead the way on this. And Rusty from our end and the sheriff from our end kind of ran point on this. And the document you have in front of you, the discussion today is kind of the summation of that exercise. So with that, I'll turn it over to Rusty and then he can introduce to that with people.
So for you is a PowerPoint that you can follow through and take notes. There is a, there is a final narrative report. And there is a needs assessment from back in May of 24 that was utilized by the group of citizens and other stakeholders that were involved in this process. Stedman and the county and city signed a contract at the end of November 23. And for about the past year, they have worked with the community to work through the needs assessment and then come up with recommendations on a plan and goals and priorities to help the governing bodies have a base to work with in deciding how to best utilize these dollars within the community. Sheriff Lee kind of led from the county side and I assisted from the manager's office on this. So with that, we can turn it over to Stedman, Rhiannon and Burke, I think.
Take it up. Well, good morning, Rhiannon Burke. Welcome. Glad you're joining us. Take it away.
Thanks, everyone. Appreciate the warm welcome and the introduction. As Rusty just stated, I'm Rhiannon Straight. I'm a senior consultant with the Stedman Group. Stedman is actually a Colorado-based consultancy, but we are very learned and experienced in the opioid settlement land. So we helped to facilitate about half of the counties across the state of Colorado. We also have opioid settlement work in Kansas, North Carolina, Philadelphia, and a little bit in Oregon as well. And we had the great pleasure of leading the city of Wichita and Sedgwick County in a collaborative effort to really create an effective and feasible strategic plan for utilizing your opioid settlement funds in alignment with subject matter experts from the community. So that is what we get to talk about today. We are breaking down today's meeting in three sections. First, we're going to provide a little bit of background and kind of the context that you need to be able to successfully engage with the strategic plan when we get there. So we'll talk a little bit about how much money you have coming, the overall Wichita-Sedgwick Opioid Settlement Consortium and our process to ultimately collaboratively develop this strategic plan for you all. Then we'll dig in directly to the strategic plan. We'll talk about vision, mission, some guiding principles, as well as the strategies and goals that the consortium created and the suggested dollar allocations for each strategy. And then we will dig into kind of the extra elements of this strategic plan, which includes some recommendations on governance or how to effectively run the plan moving forward, some communications, information, evaluation, as well as community partners that might help guide this moving forward. One thing that I really do want to hammer home as we are working through all of this is that the work we're presenting to you today is the product of the efforts of the consortium. So we will be able to make some edits and adjustments as requested by this body today, but we're not going to make substantive changes to the overall strategy because that was really a community co-created item. Okay, so what were the actual deliverables? We developed what we're calling the Strategic Plan spreadsheet. This is really where all of the juicy details of the strategic plan live. This will be kind of the guiding document for moving this work forward. As Rusty mentioned, we also have a narrative written report that outlines all of the elements of the sheet and needs assessment that was conducted with community in the first quarter of our work and the presentation that you have with you today. So let's go ahead and dig in. First, we wanted to kind of give you the lay of the land as it pertains to behavioral health or substance use in Sedgwick County. So ultimately, Sedgwick County has one of the highest rates of overdose-related emergency department visits in the state, and the majority of those visits occur among uninsured individuals. In 2021, that fatal overdose rate was nearly double the state's rate. There are also a lot of socioeconomic barriers to care, like low graduation rates, disproportionate percentages of certain populations that are uninsured. And when you look at these risk factors concurrently, it really highlights a pressing need for comprehensive interventions that address the continuum of behavioral healthcare needs. Okay, so the actual opioid settlement, starting kind of the most broad. Nationally, the settlement is expected to create or distribute just under $50 billion to states across the nation. Kansas right now has an estimated $190 million they are set to receive over the duration of the 14-year settlement in Kansas. 75% of that money goes to the Kansas Fights Addiction Fund and 25% goes to local governments or the Municipalities Fights Addiction Fund, MFAF. You might hear us refer to that acronym. That is the bucket of money that we're talking about today and the bucket of money that you all will be pulling from to implement the strategic plan. Now, each state has their own MOU or memorandum of understanding that kind of dictates how that state is going to distribute funds and what is allowable in according to the national MOU. In Kansas, allowable uses of funds point directly to a document attached to the national MOU called Exhibit E, and this outlines all of the allowable uses of funds. It's a nitty-gritty detailed document. We'll talk a little bit about it in the next couple of slides, but I just want to make sure folks know that this is kind of the guiding thing that all states are pointing back to when it comes to what we can use these dollars for and what we cannot use these dollars for. In Wichita and Sedgwick, so this is a combined estimate, the total is about $15.5 million that you're estimated to receive over the duration of the settlement. A couple of points I want to make here. These totals will fluctuate, but they are very unlikely to decrease. There are still a couple of settlements, some litigation that's ongoing, yet to finalize. As these settlements become final, these estimate amounts will be updated by the Kansas Attorney General, and we should receive information kind of on an annual basis. Okay, this is a bit detailed, as I just outlined, but before we really show you the strategic plan, we wanted to make sure that everyone was on the same page with what is an allowable use of fund and what is not an allowable use of funds. I'm going to start with unallowable uses because the list is much shorter. Primarily, we are not allowed to be using opioid settlement dollars to supplant funds. So basically, we can't replace existing funds with settlement dollars without building a program or adding to the budget of that program. There are also some really specific outlined unallowable uses, things like K-9 units, police vehicles, contributions to campaigns, as well as like guns, drones, and other equipment that is not related to opioid abatement or remediation strategies. That's unallowable. Digging into what is allowed, Exhibit E breaks this down into a couple of big buckets, primarily treatment, recovery, prevention, and other strategies. I'm going to just call out some of the suggested strategies that you might hear about later in our strategic plan to make sure everybody understands what they are. In treatment, the actual treatment of opioid use disorders through things like MAT or Medication-Assisted Treatment, also known as MOUD, Medications for Opioid Use Disorder, and withdrawal management, all allowable uses of funds, things that we'll hear of later. Support for people in treatment and recovery gets at a lot of the recovery support services that you might hear us speak about in our strategic plan. Similarly, connections to care, this gets at the elements that help catch folks when they're falling through the cracks to make sure that care is integrated and folks receive well-rounded support. And then there are a couple of callouts to special populations like justice-involved folks or pregnant and postpartum individuals. Moving forward to prevention. Prevention is a really big bucket. There's a lot of suggested strategies, including prescribing best practices, some classic prevention activities like anti-stigma campaigns or school-based prevention, harm reduction, also known as overdose prevention, which includes things like naloxone distribution. And then there are some other strategies that are a little bit less clear and defined. I want to point you all to the bullet that you see that states leadership, planning, and coordination. This bucket allows funding to be spent on the infrastructure necessary to actually implement whatever strategies you deem relevant. And then another point I want to make is the bullet that you see around research and evaluation. Exhibit E includes the option to use opioid settlement funds to evaluate the programming that you have funded thus far. And this is a really crucial point and a great addition to the overall national approach to spending. And this is going to help us ensure we don't end up in a similar scenario that the tobacco settlement ended up in, so that we can kind of check on our work and make sure that the programs that we're funding are doing what we say they're going to do and really starting to move the needle as it pertains to the opioid epidemic. Before I move on, we're about to talk a little bit about the consortium. I'm going to pause and see if there are any questions in the room about anything we've talked about thus far, or what is an allowable or unallowable use of funds.
Any questions?
Good question. Thanks for the presentation so far. On the MOU that the state did, is that similar to other states? Okay, and then the 190 million to Kansas. Of that 75% that goes to the state, or is there any way that any of that money going to trickle down to local governments or is that a state?
That is an excellent question, and I love that you are thinking about all of the moving parts. The ultimate answer is yes. The way that the 75% is dictated, there's actually a board that helps identify how the overall state share is intending to spend their dollars. They have already started bidding out a handful of different opportunities that organizations, entities around the state can tap into. And we'll talk about this a little bit later when we're digging into direct dollar allocations. But there is a great opportunity to kind of braid funding sources and not duplicate the work happening with the 25% local bucket by tracking what's happening with the 75% state share, because they're doing a lot of the same things that you all would want to be doing kind of at the local level.
Okay, and I guess that 15.5 million to Wichita-Sedgwick is based on population?
It is based on population. Yep, there is language in your MOU that specifically outlines exactly the like algorithm that they use, but primarily population.
All right, thank you. I might have been a little ahead of myself, but thank you.
All right, getting us back to our slides. Next, we want to tell you a little bit about the consortium. When we say consortium, we are referring to the WS OSC, self-titled Wichita-Sedgwick Opioid Settlement Consortium. And this is a group of Wichita-Sedgwick community members who are committed to opioid abatement and who whose subject matter expertise kind of spans the continuum of behavioral healthcare. This is really important, and we are very grateful to everyone in this consortium. There were so many committed individuals from various different areas of subject matter expertise. We had folks from the treatment provider side. We had people who work in recovery and prevention. We had a little bit of school-based prevention support. So a really good group of kind of well-rounded subject matter experts. They were guided by a steering committee. Steering Committee was made up of representatives from the city and the county, as well as the Stedman Group, kind of helping to facilitate and guide the ship. We started meeting in January of 2024, and we had, for the most part, monthly meetings from July through November. We met more than once, a couple of times, and less than a couple of times. And we just recently in December held our final meeting where we got to present the final draft version of the plan that we co-created together. All right, so what did we do? Last January, February, we dug into data collection to inform a community needs assessment. I'm going to talk a little bit about that in a second. At that point, we provided some education to make sure everyone had kind of a baseline understanding of what we were talking about. So we reviewed the allowable spends in much greater detail than what you all just saw. We discussed return on investments for various strategies so the consortium could best understand where they could get the most bang for their buck. We talked about evidence-based strategies. This is really important. There are so many things we could spend our dollars on. We wanted to make sure that the items the consortium were choosing from were very steeped in evidence, so there's proof that what we're funding works. And we dug into local expertise. So we talked about resources and gaps and had good discussions about what the folks on the consortium know to be true as far as the opioid epidemic is concerned in Wichita and Sedgwick County. Then we started to develop a plan. This was really collaborative and in a very step-by-step fashion. Burke will talk a bit about that in a little bit. We provided the final draft for the consortium and did receive some inputs that we have incorporated into the final draft presentation that you all are seeing today. And then the last kind of step is exactly what's happening now. We get to present the work to all of you fine folks. All right, so a really, really high-level overview of the needs assessment. We do provide the full report as an appendix in the narrative report that we have submitted to you all, so folks can dig in much deeper. Ultimately, the goal of this needs assessment was to get a true understanding of the behavioral health landscape in Wichita and Sedgwick County. To do this, we took a mixed methods approach. So we did some quantitative research where we looked at demographics, existing data, some of the social determinants of health, and some of the existing literature and work that had been done around resources and gaps. And then we got to speak with community members. So we conducted four focus groups across different population types and 15 different key informant interviews. And as much as I would love to dig into what we found, we don't have time today. Just want you all to know that the needs assessment did identify the most immediate needs and priorities, as well as kind of anticipated challenges that were then used as a baseline for the consortium to build the strategic plan off of. So all of the research done in the needs assessment helped to inform the work moving forward and the ultimate strategic plan that you see in front of you today. And with that, I get to hand this off to my colleague Burke Fishburne to dig into the strategic plan.
Good morning, everyone. I am Burke Fishburne. I'm the Director for Organizational Development at the Stedman Group. First, I want you to know that this strategic plan lives in that spreadsheet. We did that on purpose. We wanted to hand off something that implementers could dig into, track, modify. So in the documents that we're providing to you, just know that the strategic plan guts kind of live in this document, the spreadsheet, and summarized in the narrative report and other places as well. So first off, as Rhiannon was stating, we took a very methodical, stepwise approach to developing the strategic plan. We went into this wanting to provide you with a strategic plan that was as focused, evidence-based, tight, and concise as possible. You probably all have this experience. You have strategic plans and there are these huge documents and they become incredibly complex and nobody looks at them and they sit on the shelf. That's not what we're giving to you. It is effective. It's based on what the consortium thought was most feasible and based on what the priorities are. The strategic plan does not do everything, okay? This is very focused, based on what the top priorities are in terms of what the consortium discussed and decided upon. Stepwise approach, we develop a mission. Based on that mission, our vision, we develop the mission statement for the strategic plan itself. We develop some guiding principles based on that and so forth, all the way down to suggestions for potential activities. There are also other elements to the strategic plan. Do these as, we'll call them roadmaps for implementers. And these, which we'll talk about, include allocation estimates, implementation recommendations, governance, and so on. So this list, one through six, are other elements of the strategic plan, roadmaps for the strategic plan. We wanted to hand off something that implementers could implement on day one. Moving on. I'm going to only hit these elements of the strategic plan at a very high level because we want to get into discussion and your questions, and I'm not going to read what's on the slides, okay? So just know that we developed a very concise vision statement. This was a consensus vision statement from the consortium, very consistent with other vision statements that we're seeing in strategic plan opioid settlements bodies across the country and very focused on what you want to do in Sedgwick County. So that's the vision statement, very big, very broad, very ambitious. And then the mission statement is more about what you, Sedgwick County, city of Wichita, are going to do to reach this vision, knowing that you're not alone. There's other work going on in Kansas. There's other work going into the country. But this is what you're going to do in terms of your mission statement and how you're going to proceed in a very community-driven collaborative approach. And I want to emphasize here that the consortium put great value in continuing this collaboration between city and county and with the community. This, whether it's the consortium or the stakeholders or partners that were involved in the consortium, they saw huge value in continuing this very collaborative approach. So that's your vision statement. And then, moving on, there are also guiding principles. The way to think about these guiding principles are the consortium recommendations to you on how you can and probably should make decisions on what's going to get implemented, what's going to get funded, where you're headed. If you're going to take a look at the strategic plan in the future and make revisions, what's going to guide that thinking? So both guardrails and also kind of inspiring guiding principles is what's suggested here. One thing to note, again, very consistent with guiding principles that are being established for other opioid settlement work across the country. Moving on. Guiding principle number one, I'm just going to glance through these. The first guiding principle is spend money to save lives. First of all, get this money out the door and prioritize your opioid settlement money on the things that are going to have the most impact in terms of opioid response. Guiding principle two, use the evidence to guide spending. We know what works. We don't have to go out and test new theories, new products, new interventions. There is room for that in the strategic plan, I want to note, but we already know what works. So let's rely on what works and get that implemented, allowing for some innovation that is based on your community needs. You might have very specific needs, and the opioid settlement actually allows for some innovation there. Guiding principle number three, a focus on equity, very consistent with what's both in the opioid settlement allowable spends and as other thinking and other guiding principles that we're seeing across the country. Guiding principle number four, we need to invest in what's cost-effective and across the spectrum. So Rhiannon was speaking previously about those allowable spends from prevention to recovery. That's kind of considered the continuum. So invest in all these things across that continuum. Guiding principle number five, we have learned, Stedman Group, that there is a huge return on investing in transparency, accountability, and fairness in your decision-making process, not only in Colorado, but other states as well. We think Wichita-Sedgwick can be a model for the rest of the state and for the rest of the country and how you go about doing this work. You already are a model for the rest of the state in terms of this consortium process, the transparency, the accountability, the community collaboration. We'd love to see that continue. So just know, you're leaders in this, you're champions in this, you're way out in front of others. Guiding principle number six, this comes back to the earlier question about what might be going on in terms of that 75% bucket at the state level and braiding funding, you know, term of art, braiding funding, which just means making sure that you're using all available sources of funding. Let's make sure that that 15 million goes as far as it can in the 17 or so years that you have it and then beyond. Invest in ways that are going to sustain efforts into the future and have a real impact. So there's some such suggestions around that in the strategic planning effort. So those are the guiding principles. I'll pause there, see if there are any questions on the guiding principles, and then I'm going to move on to the strategies and the goals themselves.
Very good, Burke. Any questions so far? Seeing none.
Okay. Okay. So again, I'm not going to get into any detail here. I want you to know first that there are four strategies. Remember the whole focus? There could have been nine, seriously. I think we started out with nine or 10. But we, through the consortium process, decided to focus on these four basic strategies or kind of categories of work that we're going to do. Stigmative reduction, community outreach and education, very kind of on the same spectrum. Integrated care, a little bit of a term of art, but this is kind of the comprehensive integrated approaches to providing services, overdose prevention and expansion of treatment. So very consistent with allowable spends and very much what the consortium is recommending in terms of your focus. Each of these strategies have a statement associated with them and I'm not going to read them. And they also have specific goals that the consortium identified along with what we called goal metrics. So we want the goals to be measurable. The reason for that is that we want to know where are we having success and how can we build on success? And if we fail, how do we learn from failure? So the goals and the goal metrics, we want to track and evaluate over time. So the consortium went through a very involved process of both developing the strategy areas, the strategy statements, a very discreet number, limited number of goals and metrics associated with those goals. And again, I'm not going to read through these. And in fact, Rhiannon, I'm just going to have you scroll through as we, you know, take a quick look at the goal statements and the excuse me, the strategy statements and the goals and the goal statements. What is not included in the presentation today are a detailing of the activities that the consortium also recommended. So if you remember from that slide, what's in the strategic plan are potential activities. And the way to think about these are, when you go about making decisions about what projects are you going to go out and procure, there are suggestions from the consortium about what projects you should go after. Again, these are suggestions. And in that procurement process, you're going to have conversations with your potential implementers, your vendors, so to speak. And that's when you're going to decide on deliverables, what actually is going to be done. And so there is a little bit of a blueprint in the strategic plan for that. But just know, the consortium also gave you recommendations around potential activities. So strategy one, you've got goal statements. Strategy two, again, this is integrated care. There are goal statements around that. Strategy three, the strategy statement along with goals. Sorry, I'm just blowing through this. And strategy four, strategy statement along with goals. I wanted to get through this quickly because I know we are probably going to want to have discussion maybe about this and other areas as well. And the nitty-gritty detail is in that spreadsheet document that we've provided to the steering committee and I think will be, you know, be shared with you probably by the end of today. So I'm going to stop there. Very quick sketch of the strategic plan from vision down to goal, goal statements and then pointing to where the potential activities are also identified.
Okay. Thank you, Burke. So I guess at this point in time, can open up for some questions. Sheriff, I also want to kind of get your take on this process and conversation. I see as we skip ahead, I'm looking at the suggested dispersment, the allocation and the percentages and such. Do we want to, do we want to talk about that first or Burke, where do you want to go at this point? Do you want to just kind of take some questions if we have them or?
Sure. So just to note, what we're going to brief on next are those so-called roadmaps. So these include the recommendation, recommended allocations, an implementation plan. I suspect there's going to be questions around the consortium recommendations for governance. Because that, you know, that's a big decision that you all have to make. And then there's also communication evaluation. So those are other, you know, kind of the roadmaps to implement the strategy that we can also get into right now or happy to entertain questions about anything that we talked about in terms of the broad strategy, goals, et cetera.
I think from the goal standpoint, I think I highly recommend kind of the direction you guys are going and I appreciate the direction you're going. And I did peek ahead and looked at how you were going to portionally disperse these funds based on these different categories. I guess my, one of the questions kind of underscoring all of this is, does anybody know where the state's at on that larger lump sum of money and have they started collaboration with the localities at all as to what this could look like? Anybody have any idea? I mean, that's, it feels like obviously city, county working together on the local level is important, but there's a bigger pot of money out there that's going to be put into play. Does anybody have any idea where their heads at?
I can provide a little bit of insight if that's helpful. If folks in the room want to start, please do so. Okay, I'm happy to take that on. So I believe the state chair bucket has successfully issued three rounds of RFPs for addressing the priorities and goals that they deemed the most relevant. There are specifics for what those RFPs included. If you look at the Sunflower Foundation website, Sunflower Foundation is the body kind of in charge of that 75% share. And the way that this has worked is they have identified priorities. I think prevention was one. I think treatment has been one and I can actually pull them up as we are presenting some other things. So I can give you a little bit more information. And they've bid out RFPs for organizations to start cracking at these goals in year-long increments. So they have given one-year grants essentially to a wide range of different community organizations to start chipping away at these goals. And the community is pretty well-informed as far as what the opportunities have been for applying. One thing that we did here in our work is that it's difficult to sustain the efforts that are currently being funded at the state level because they are doing this in annual increments. And I believe the body that's governing this took that feedback and moving forward is going to start allowing longer-term projects. In the behavioral health, public health world, it takes a little bit of time to really get an effective program stood up and functioning and like meeting your outcomes. And so extending the amount of time that the state chair is funding these organizations should hopefully start cracking away at that issue as well. And then I think the last thing that might be useful for you all to know related to this is that this will continue to happen. So the state chair will continue to issue these RFPs that community organizations can apply for. And that's how they're starting to diminish the funds that they have for them.
Thank you. That's very helpful.
The only thing I'll add is that we also know that the 75% funds are starting to flow into the county, into the city. So they're funding organizations in the county. Some of those are for statewide approaches. Some of them are for regional approaches and some of them are for local approaches as well.
Sure.
Brianna, Burke, that's, I had not heard that before. So how how does this entity in the city of Wichita understand who's received money here already from the state then?
Yeah, great, great question. I can send you a link that shows you. Sunflower Foundation has a list of all the organizations that have received funds. They also put out an annual report at the end of every year. So I don't know if I've seen 2024s yet, but at the end of 2023, they published all of the funded organizations and a little bit about what the program looked like. And Sheriff, we discussed in consortium conversations, kind of when those RFPs were coming out, who might be interested in bidding on them. So the stakeholders involved in the room have been privy to this process, at least for the last year.
Well, Brianna, can a local, like kind of Wichita entity that provides service bid on a state and one of these state RFPs?
Yes, absolutely. Another good question. So if you are an organization, say they put out an RFP for recovery support services. This is a real example. I know they funded an Oxford House program. Oxford House is a sober, living approach where folks who are not ready to re-enter the community but don't need a higher level of care, like residential treatment, can live for a long period of time. They funded Oxford Houses that are directly in Sedgwick County with the 75% state share. So you are not restricted in applying if you only provide services to a community. You are basically trying to sell the need in your application and then the state kind of dictates where need is highest and that's how they're determining who gets the funds. And that is what Burke was implying when he said state funds are starting to trickle down into your communities and actually have some impact in that way.
We, Chairman, we've been asking this question for a couple of years after this model, this process of how money was going to be allocated. And Justin and I had talked about this a number of times. We feel the best strategy going forward is to, for the county or the city to partner with local nonprofits to access this money. We feel like the 25% allocation to local government already, city and county is, that's it. And any other of the 75, if you want to access the 75% from the state, you need a community partner to go after. That's the tact we've been taking on this. And I think that'll be our tact in the future as well.
Again, one more question. So similar to COVID and ARPA, who's in charge of watching this money and is there going to be audit stuff coming?
Technically, the counselor's office is doing the reporting and things, but we do have a dedicated fund. Now, if you all recall, when the legislature authorized the creation of a fund, we have one that's included in your monthly quarterly financial report called the municipality's fight addiction fund. So that's where we're tracking all the revenues and all of the expenses for our audit perspective. And I will defer to Justin if the AG is going to audit anything.
Yeah, thanks, Commissioner Meister. The, I don't believe there's been, if you're asking in terms of the expenditures, we have to make sure any of the expenditures are correct under the state statute and also our MOU at the Attorney General's Office. We submit an annual report. They've also been very helpful in terms of commenting if an expenditure is permitted under the statute. So that's something we've had regular communication with them about as we've considered items or and we have to submit an annual report and we just did one recently showing all, which we didn't submit any money in 2024. Any of our expenditures were, I believe in 2023, if I remember correctly, because we started this process with the city of Wichita with all of our funds. But that is something that we do. But in terms of any additional follow-up, there is continual follow-up and they can't ask for details on that, I believe, under all of our agreements. And that's something we can provide the state that inquires about.
That's helpful, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just want to say, first of all, this is a nice report and everything and I think it's nice to get a refresher here, but like my first question is, Stedman Group, are you, are you doing this report and making this presentation on behalf of the state of Kansas or who's actually Wichita, Sedgwick County? Okay.
We did an RFP process.
Thank you for the reminder. And so I don't know if they're advocating eventually here exactly what we should do with our money. I guess maybe get to the end of the report. That's perhaps where we're headed here. Just a couple of reminders and I just want to tell you, I think we, obviously have some decisions to make and I appreciate the advice and the in the background. I'm just can't tell you disappointed, excuse me, how disappointed I am that we're basically left with very little resources. When we started this process back in 2017, we were, I think, the, one of the very few first litigants on this entire discussion. In fact, it was a split vote. And it wasn't an easy discussion. There was a lot of concern about unattended consequences. And the reason we led on that issue is because we knew that Sedgwick County specifically was having a huge problem with this. The rest of the state didn't get on board for years, neither did Wichita for that matter. Sedgwick County led on this issue. We were, we were a leader nationally on this litigation. And it was because we had a big problem here in Sedgwick County. What I see happening right now is everyone else is taking the lion's share of the pie. And, you know, Sedgwick County is going to get a portion of that 25%. And it's not based on, it should be based on case, you know, the number of cases, number of incidents that are happening in the community. I don't know if it was in the the agreement with the state of Kansas or with Wichita, but to do this by population doesn't make a lot of sense to me. Sedgwick County has the biggest problem in the state of Kansas and I think that's going to continue. Yeah, we're just left with basically pennies on the dollar here. We started this process and we have basically just, we have to abide by the state's rules. A lot of the, again, community partners, I'm sure they're going to do great work. But Sedgwick County made the argument that we were the ones that were providing the services during that time. There was actual cost to taxpayers. We were trying to offset the cost to taxpayers to provide these same services. And that's not what this is doing at all. We're essentially creating new programs to deal with these issues. And that's not necessarily bad. But the reason we got involved in this litigation to begin with is because we had a huge cost to taxpayers and we weren't able to provide the services we felt like we needed. This, this program, as I'm seeing it right now, is everybody else has their hand in the pie. We're not, we don't have the resources coming back to us. We actually led this issue. And, you know, we have to, we have to basically apply for funds from the state of Kansas, not necessarily us, but our community partners have to apply for funds. And they may or may not get some funding and we don't know if it's going to be one year or more than one year. This entire, this entire discussion, you know, again, we dealt with this for a couple of years even before we started the litigation, maybe a year or so before we started the litigation. Back in 2017, we had a lot of meetings. And the county was very bold to take you that position. And I'm just, I can't just tell you how disappointed I am that we're talking about such a small amount of revenue to do with the state's largest problem here in our county. So again, I'll wait till the rest of the presentation. I just wanted to say that I I think that the state of Kansas has has taken an opportunity here that's really hurt our community. And I don't think that's where we wanted to be here at this point. Thank you.
Any other questions at this point? Okay, Brianna, if you want to move through, through the allocation and then the strategic plan, that'd be great.
Yeah, absolutely. And I just want to acknowledge the, the point that was just made and how challenging it can be to do good work, given the constraints that we have kind of put on us by the litigation rules and requirements. I think when we dig into recommended allocations and we start looking at exactly how much money you have to play with and maybe dig in a little bit further to our implementation plan, it might illuminate the potential that you actually do have with these dollars. 15 and a half million isn't a small amount of change. And maybe when we start to kind of actionize it for you at the, through the end of the presentation, might feel slightly differently. But I really do just want to acknowledge the point that was made. It's relevant and real and we appreciate it here. Moving us forward, next, we're going to talk about the recommended allocations. In order to really best understand this, there's some contextual information to consider. The amounts or estimates that we're showing you today are, again, estimates. They are likely to increase slightly over time as additional litigation finalizes. But currently, as of end of 2024, Sedgwick and Wichita have a combined total of about $15.5 million to work with. There was a little over $2 million already available and in the bank account in Sedgwick and Wichita County's bank, I'm sorry, Wichita and Sedgwick County's bank accounts at the end of 2024. So keep in mind, while we have 15.5 available over the duration of the settlement, these will be paid out in annual installments. And the, the installments are front-loaded loaded. So the first couple of years, front loaded loaded. So the first couple of years, your payouts will be a little bit larger than the last, you know, eight to five to eight years. This really emphasizes the need for sustainability and thinking through evaluating what we're doing to make sure that you're really using funds for things that work and have the biggest bang for our buck. Another thing to note is that this MOU does allow flexibility as this pooled contribution of city and county really shows. I believe Sedgwick and Wichita were the first in the state of Kansas to decide to pool their their dollars. And this was a brilliant move by you all because you you're you're going to make your money go significantly further. And for folks who work in the behavioral health world, nobody seeks services directly in the in the community that they live in, right? People are going out of Wichita through other places in the county, and people might even be leaving the county in order to seek services. So the the pooling was a brilliant approach to really getting the best impact for your community. The other point I want to make is that these allocation recommendations that we're about to show on the next slide are really dependent on external factors that are outside of our control entirely. Um, what funding is available at a state level, whether that's the seventy five percent opioid share or maybe through some other state grants that are coming and going as the landscape changes? What kind of federal funding is available? The federal landscape is changing and shifting, and that really kind of changes how much we should be spending on certain buckets based on what is available elsewhere. As well as the overall allocation process and mechanism that your governing body that you land on decides to choose for how you're going to get this money out the door. Um, certain infrastructure might be a little bit more costly than than other types. So all of this is to say that the allocation recommendations that we're about to show you are a guide. They're a guide for you all to be considering kind of the the general layout of how you should be spending funds. And the exact amounts that you are spending per strategy or goal, all of those great goals that Burke just walked you through are dependent on the implementing agency's suggested budget. This is an important kind of fine detail here. Depending on how you RFP these out, if you if you use an RFP or a different solicitation mechanism, the organizations that apply to do this work, they know exactly what it costs. And they should also be presenting to you all plans for sustaining this work beyond the duration of opioid settlement money and other sustainability factors, like how much of their program is potentially reimbursable through things um through through like other factors like Medicaid. So keep that in mind. These are estimates that serve as a guide. And when you start actually implementing the strategic plan, folks who are bidding on this are going to really help you determine exactly how much should be spent in each subcategory. All right, let's break it down. You saw previously when Burke was presenting the four different strategies that we have embedded in the strategic plan. There is another piece of the pie here that you all have not seen before. And it is what we're calling planning and coordination of the strategic plan. The work that we have presented to you today takes time, it takes staff time, it takes money and resources to actually be able to implement this strategic plan. Right now, we have set aside about fifteen percent, which is a pretty common administrative expense for public health work. And we just really want you to kind of keep your eye on that orange piece of the pie because this feels big and heavy, like a really big lift for electeds. You all don't have to do this work. You can pay experts, whether that be community organizations, consultants like the Stedman Group, um, maybe like a United Way in the community to to really implement the plan. And that is a very allowable use of funds in exhibit. So I just really wanted to make sure we hammer that home. Um, a little bit about the estimation process. The way that we got here was by reviewing various cost estimates per strategy and goal outlined in the strategic plan. As I mentioned a slide ago, that is not an easy task. There are a lot of moving parts and different factors that uh, kind of help determine how much something will cost. This was heavily informed by subject matter experts in the consortium who are involved in billing and operations and planning. So um, you know, we we kind of know how much a medical detox will stand up because we have folks in the community who are already trying to stand it up. We also considered current city and county behavioral health context, like different resources that are readily available. There's um a good amount of money in the community towards treatment, but treatment is also really expensive, and so it needs a bigger slice of the pie. Um, and then I think the last thing I'll share here is that all of these estimates were discussed in detail with the consortium and ultimately endorsed by the subject matter experts. So they feel that this is a pretty reasonable breakdown of how much of your money should go towards stigma reduction, outreach and education, how much should go towards integrated care, overdose prevention, treatment, and then planning and coordination, ultimately implementing all of this work.
Mr. Chairman, just curious, can they please explain more deeply? What is they, what do they mean by integrated care?
Yeah, absolutely. We we thought that question might come up. So integrated care is a term that's pretty well known in the behavioral health world, but it really gets at a patient centered approach to care that combines medical, behavioral health, and kind of social factors all in one place. Um, right now, the behavioral health system in Sedgwick and Wichita is pretty siloed. So if you are a mental health provider, often the clients that you're working with also have substance use disorders. But mental health and substance use providers don't have the infrastructure they need to work concurrently and together. And so the treatment that folks are receiving becomes really compartmentalized, and that is not great for outcomes for substance use disorder. And so integrated care and the the goals included in integrated care start to get at, I believe it's this, yes. Start to get at the solutions that you need in your community to help bridge the gaps between different types of behavioral health related care. So as you can see, the goals are related to workforce support. How do we train providers in these different realms so that they can better collaboratively work together? How do we identify partnerships and set up some structures so that medical providers, substance use providers, and mental health providers can communicate data, can communicate referrals? And how do we sustain the overall connected structure through identifying other funding sources outside of the opioid settlement? Does that help folks kind of wrap their heads around what we mean by integrated care?
Yeah, I think that's the answer I probably expected to hear. Um, another question back, you 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 kind of touched this already, but that planning and coordination, that strategic plan fund at two point three two five million dollars, how much of that's been spent at this point?
That is a question we might have to toss to city and county folks. Um, it's also something that I could find out after this meeting and report back to you all. My guess is it's a pretty small piece of that pie and is probably mostly related to Stedman's contract.
I see.
Sorry, go ahead.
And uh, Chairman, Commissioner Howe, I believe Armand can probably speak to that some um in terms of what expenditures occurred at this point in time. Is that correct, Armand?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions related to recommended allocations before we dig into the other elements of the strategic plan that will hopefully help you all start to see this in action, how this will look when we're implementing?
Um, a couple of questions, yeah. Uh, we have county council here. We have some questions about what has been spent. Do you have that list, Armand?
Yes, um, Commissioner, um, to clarify, uh, Armand Schraff is in county council. Uh, we've spent, um, the only expenditure occurred so far uh was the expenditure from for the year of twenty twenty three and uh, there's going to be a expenditure for uh the services uh rendered by the presenter today. Uh, the total cumulative spent so far is three hundred sixty four thousand dollars, uh, three hundred sixty four thousand sixty six dollars and forty seven cents of these three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars and some um change, and I can provide specific numbers, was for mass spectrometer. Um, and that was uh needed by the labs and forty nine thousand dollars went for uh Geo Media. Um, that was an advertisement campaign targeting high school kids uh of heightened uh risk group uh about the uh pitfalls of drug use.
So I guess my my comment would be most of that money has not been spent. It's allocation. I would like to have the county, I guess, uh, understand that more deeply because I don't, I'm not real happy with that number. I think we should not be spending fifteen percent of this fund just on the planning and coordination of the plan.
Let me, let me make sure I'm understanding from Stedman. And we're we're focusing on the two point three two five number.
Yes.
Um, Lindsey uh advises that we have spent our half for phase one and phase two for Stedman is thirty one thousand five hundred. It's half of the grand total. The city would match that number. The rest of this amount, I think, is up for discussion amongst the electeds on how you want to move forward and whether you take it up with where we have where we contract with another provider, maybe United Way or Stedman or some other entity to help us administrate this. I think that is up to the people yet. That has not been decided. That money has not been spent, nor will it until this body greenlights that. Am I correct on that, Stedman? Thank you.
Yes, absolutely. And the fifteen percent is a high estimate. Uh, the the worst thing that we could do is underestimate how much infrastructure would cost you all and then have you with not enough money to be able to actually get the money out the door. So I think that that is a a fair and good call out. And it it makes me feel excited to hear that we are considering that that might be too much money. This was a a high, the highest end of the estimate that we could go to ensure um things like evaluation are included so that you are making sure that where you do spend is effectively impacting the community. But but good call out and good discussion to have amongst yourselves.
Okay, um, any other questions on this cursory review and the allocation? Okay, we can keep going.
Alrighty, I believe I will hand it back to Burke to dig in.
This is a a great setup for what we're going to talk about next. So this planning and coordination allocation, these are the things that you would spend that money on. Uh, governance structure, implementation, communication, evaluation. So we we can kind of unpack what that spending might look like by looking at these other roadmaps that we're suggesting in the context of the strategic plan. First of all, you have a decision to make on uh, we'll call it governance of the strategic plan. We try to boil this down into four options. Um, these are discussed in detail in the other documents that we're providing to you. I'm just going to try to give you a a high level overview of these different options. When we looked at these governance options, we based these on what we could find out about how you all operate, both at a city and county level. Um, how other organizations, other opioid settlement bodies are operating. And then a little bit of innovation, you know, where where could, where do you have flexibility? Um, what could you do? We focused a lot on what is most efficient, what what is most effective? You want your dollar to go as far as it can if you're going to spend money on governance. The other thing that we focused on was transparency and accountability. Um, how can you make decisions um through a very robust, rigorous process? How do you establish systems of accountability? And then finally, when we're looking at these options, we also wanted to factor in what the consortium was thinking and what the consortium consortium was modeling in terms of stakeholder or community engagement. So you see these options, basically, um, these aren't numbered what the top to the bottom, something that's very tightly controlled by the government. Um, very internal to the government, maybe through your uh existing on bond process to something that is almost completely independent of the the city and county governance, except for maybe the decision making about how you're going to spend the money. So first option, um, very tightly controlled by government, uh, city and county get together. You make decisions, you make um decisions about uh procurement, you do selections. Um, and you uh fund projects and you control those budgets. You evaluate everything, um, all within a kind of closely held city and county process. You'd have to stand up some some capacity among city and county officials, of course. This could be solely city, it could be solely county, um, all options in between. Um, and then, and there's also options in between these options, right? Um, there's, like I said, infinite flexibility among all these options. The next thing would be to build in some type of advisory council, advisory committee, external advisory body that's coming together, advising city and county um, on how to go, how to implement, how to procure projects, how to select projects, maybe even how to evaluate projects. So a second option, you know, you're just operating with some kind of advisory body. Third model, and there are models for this, is some kind of public private partnership. Maybe the terminology isn't right, but this is where you might contract with a community organization, a university, another third party, a consulting firm to basically run everything um, to facilitate the whole process. Still, with city and county governance, oversight, decision making, voting, but the whole process is run by this third party. So um somewhat of a a public private partnership. Um, and then, um, finally, and maybe on the other end of the spectrum is you have a very community driven, independent process. Um, and you're relying on them to make decisions and maybe even run procurement um with city and county um acting as fiscal agent. So that's another option. So um, kind of boil it all down, um, these are discussed in detail. But these are the basic options that we saw and presented um and the consortium is is recommending. Where the consortium landed is something that definitely involves stakeholder engagement, community engagement with a high degree of transparency and accountability with the default to elected officials making ultimate decisions about what's going to get funded. So I'll stop there. Um, I know I kind of did a high level summary. Um, I I am expecting there might be lots of questions about this.
Hey, guys, any questions about the governance piece in particular? Is the, is it coming later what the consortium, what their recommendation was? You just mentioned that they recommended high transparency with electeds as the default. Was there a specific recommendation of these options?
Um, I I think, so we had discussion with the consortium about this. And I will say we didn't land on a particular recommendation among these four, except that models two um, an advisory council or a kind of third party run partnership model um is 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 kind of where we thought we would have most efficiency, most transparency, most accountability, and most community engagement, kind of hitting all those, those requirements or, or principles. On the other end of the spectrum, closely held government, government run process to a completely independent council. I think those were outliers.
Okay, sure. It is, yeah. Sure. If you have any thoughts to that, what you, I mean, this is obviously your, this is specifically relevant to the things that you do and are experiencing, and you've led across the state on the opioid conversation, which we appreciate. So do you have any thoughts of what the governance could or should look like?
Yeah, I agree with Burke's assessment that the two middle, city, county governments with advisory council and public private partnership model is more so probably where we want to land for everything that Burke said from transparency to oversight to those type of things. One of the, the main factors, driving factors for, for me to be involved in, in this is years ago, when I was with the city of Wichita, so was a couple of other people in the room, there was a program called Weed and Seed. When that was first brought here, the misuse of those funds, because there was not the tight kind of balance of you have to provide measures, you have to provide what you're using the money for, and, and real statistics was a problem. And so I don't want to see that happen with this particular money that local and governments is, is delving out to different entities. Because you will have some entities that come in that just got formed simply to take advantage of this money with no track record, nor really anything in place to allocate the funds properly. And so those are things that, as, as Burke and Rihanna has said throughout this, it's, it's about the transparency, it's about allocating the funds to entities that are solid entities that's going to help this community.
That's good feedback. I appreciate that. When it comes to the actual disbursement of funds, Justin, this might be for you. Depending on what route we go, because these are dollars that are being given to the, to the county, does that have to go through an RFP process to, is this a grant type process?
And just to clarify, you're saying any of these opioid funding funds, would we have to go through that process? I believe we would in this case. I don't know that there's an exception to competitive bidding for that in terms of how we would go through that. To this point, I haven't engaged in detailed discussions with purchasing and finance on that, but I think so.
I, I think it's always best to go through acquisition publicly so that there's competition. And it's, it has the transparency that Burke is talking about. I, I think it would behoove us to do, even if it's not required.
Good, very good. Commissioner Hough?
I guess, I guess this is not a, not a horrible slide, but I guess my simple mind says, try to keep things simple. And this seems like a lot of, a lot of unnecessary activity around something I think is much simpler than what appears on the slide here. I guess my, my thought would be when it comes to prevention and education, those, the, the education side of this, I, I would love to see a public information officer from our public health department, our sheriff's department, our DA, maybe more than one person that can do public information officer presentations around this community to educate the community on what's going on. That to me is about communication and, and education to our students and, and people across our community. The, the prevention side, I'm not sure exactly what you can do to prevent. I think that's a very mysterious discussion, actually. The prevention side, I think of this, of this is very difficult. I don't know that Narcan is the answer. And I think that you just pump a bunch of Narcan in the community is not really solving a problem. So I'm a little bit concerned about the prevention side, but when it comes to the treatment side, we heard the chairman on the radio this morning talking about duplication and functional consolidation, once again. We have a, we have an organization in the county right now that is uniquely qualified to do integrated care, mental health services and addiction services, and that's called Calm Care. It seems to me that we should be using our agency, this uniquely qualified, to do these services that are set up. In fact, one of the reasons we went to this lawsuit in the, in the first place back in 2017 was they were expending huge amounts of taxpayer, taxpayer dollars because of this opioid problem that has risen up in our community, and they were the ones that were spending so much effort to deal with the problems. And so I don't know why we would not just say simply, do we trust them to provide these services to this population the best they possibly can for treatment and integrated care? And so it comes down to education through public information officers and Calm Care providing that integrated care and treatment for this problem. And then on the other issue of prevention, I think that that to me is a little bit more mysterious. But what this slide says is we're going to spend a lot of time talking and talking and talking. And everyone's going to be helping make decisions. And I don't think the problem is, we're talking, we're talking for the county right now, about seven and a half million dollars of spending. And it sounds like a lot of money, but really it's not that much money. When you talk about what Calm Care provides in this community, that's a, it's a tiny amount of money overall. And I just think they could absorb this and actually provide these services. I think that this is, to me, this is not worth this level of government, government to create, if you will, how to spend seven and a half million dollars for the county. We have a uniquely qualified agency that's designed to do exactly what they do. This is the absolute best way to attack this problem. I feel like we're creating duplication of government. We are creating levels of government. And there's not, there's an absence of, again, I think functional consolidation when you talk about creating layers of control here that may be unnecessary. I, I'm just not sure this is my, I'm not sure I support what this is talking about on this slide as, as it's presented today. Thank you, Chairman.
Sure.
So, you know, those were some of the discussions, Commissioner, that took place. And at the end of the day, as elected officials, you, we're giving you a plan to make decisions on. You can choose whatever you want to choose to do. Here's what I'll tell you about Calm Care, Integrated Care. Do they do substance abuse care? Because they don't. SAC does. Does SAC need more money to be able to give better treatment and recovery care? Absolutely. That's not through Calm Care, though. There's other entities that are part of this that provide good services other than just the county doing it. I understand the county has been the one that has been, lack of a better term, forced to do this for this community. But at the end of the day, if the decision's made to go with Calm Care to do all this stuff, then is there support when this money runs out for the county to take up the cost of all that money? That's the other thing you have to consider for this, because the fact of the matter is, is that if you delve out some of this to other entities that are experts in the field of, of treatment and recovery and, and those type of things, because that's the main crux of this, is the opioid settlement funds. Then are you comfortable with saying, once this money runs out, you're going to have to find funding through other community entities, other nonprofits? Or are you comfortable with them coming to you saying, hey, here's what we've done. Now will you fund us even further? I mean, those are all real discussions that you have to have. I think from a prevention standpoint, you know, we did a lot of good work with a hundred thousand dollars that was allocated by the county to educate our youth on substance, and I call it abuse, not misuse. So there's some terminology here that I don't necessarily always agree with, but it means the same thing. And what we saw out of that, statistically, what we saw out of that, less overdoses of our youth and less overdose deaths over a year and a half timeframe. And so I get it, prevention, you, you can't measure prevention. You just, it, it's hard to do that. But that doesn't mean we don't do it. I think from a PIO perspective involving at least the sheriff's office, we do presentations, keep doing presentations. Here's what I'll tell you, and this is coming from our partners that do this work every day with the folks that are most affected. Is there trust in law enforcement to do that? I can tell you, no. They think we're there to arrest them for their illegal drug use. And so I, I, I agree that there is maybe an entity within the county, health department probably more so, that, you know, money could be allocated to help do prevention, help do prevention in the schools. You know, we had long discussions about some of these folks that are, have been hardcore drug users for years, have been in and out of the systems, in and out of the jail systems, in and out of treatment, those type of things. I think our focus should be on our youth. We have to change the culture of that drug use is normal and drug use is something that, you know, you're going to experiment with. We got kids dying from it for experimenting. And so there has to be an element of that. What that is, you know, what the options we give here, that's for you and the city council members to, to say, this is the option that we want to exercise. We're just trying to give you options, not dictating how and what you do. Brianna and Burke, is that kind of, I capture the conversations we've had for a year?
Yeah, absolutely. The, the governance options range from basically the, the structure you have right now to something completely different and independent. So completely up to you on which you choose.
Let me, let me add in, the, the scope and purpose of this discussion this, this morning was to give the commission a front end view of what we're going to talk about in an on-bonk. I think some of the discussion we're seeing this morning is very good, very robust, and ought to wait until we get to the on-bonk. The, the beauty of partnership is we took a certain amount of money, we doubled it because we included City of Wichita. The bad part of partnership is now we have seven council people who also get a way in. So I think this discussion, I'd like, I'd like Stedman to get through with their presentation was just to give you the front end look at this. I don't know, we need to solve any problems today or talk about operational procedures today. I think you should think about it. And when we have the on-bonk, I think that's when that discussion comes up. And then we move forward based on, as the sheriff said, what the elected officials want us to do. This is a plan that you can adopt all of, none of, or part of, and we will move it forward. So I want to make sure that we just understood the scope of what today is all about.
Very good. Well, my explanation is briefly, if you don't mind. Throughout this year of conversations, and the sheriff hit on it and they, they've hit on it, but the conversations with the people doing this work, which includes Calm Care, but it also includes a lot of community partners who are not government related, whether they're nonprofits or full profits. The conversation covered the areas of service that are not currently being provided in this community. There are gaps in this community. We've talked about three, six, seven, and what gaps were left by that legislation on the juvenile side. Same thing exists in this, in this realm of treatment for substance abuse, substance misuse for our citizens is there are gaps. And this, this plan with those voices and those conversations was written in a way to try to provide this money to fill those gaps where the service isn't being provided, where it doesn't exist. And, and providing other sources that can provide that besides government itself.
Yeah, good to know. Appreciate that. Yeah.
Just wanted to clarify, again, Sheriff's done a good job on the one pill can kill campaign. The crime commission's been in part of that. And I just say, again, you can call that prevention, which, again, that's one way to describe it. I call that education. And there's an education sector of this pie chart that we, we were just, just saw a moment ago. So the PIO, my opinion is, is about education, which is a part of prevention. But prevention to me, when, I don't even know what page it's on now, but I saw the idea of buying syringes and Narcan. To me, that's a Band-Aid to the problem. I think the real problem is, is you've got to stop people before they do this, not while they're in the middle of it. I mean, once they're down that road of, they're already addicted, that's now become a treatment issue. And so again, the idea of prevention being things like syringes and Narcan, I, I don't know that I agree that that's the right answer. So there was a couple of entities that it's called the Needle Exchange Program, threw that out as an option. I made it very clear. Plus, if you remember, I contacted everybody on the commission about that idea. I am not for that idea whatsoever. That's not in this plan. And I guess, so I'm just trying to understand, in this plan, when they use the word prevention, what do they mean? Because it sounds like it's education. Education has its own sector of that pie chart. So once again, education is absolutely important, is imperative. The county needs to be involved in education. And again, I think the public health department has, has a role to play here. They have what's called public health educators already, part of their current staff. So again, as they talk to students and talk to the community, they should be talking about the dangers of opioids. They, they can implement that curriculum in what they're doing currently. And I know, I'm not saying that they should be alone or they should be the, they should be, there should be other, other partners as well. But what I'm seeing right now is this is again, by creating a different program here, it's a duplication. We have, and I do agree with you, Mr. Sheriff, that SAC is a great, what they do. And I think we are good partners with SAC. We'd like to continue, you know, using SAC to provide that service. I think my, when I commented at Calm Care, I was saying, the way we deal with addictions in Central County is a partnership with SAC. They do a good job. I think they should be part of the answer here. But what I don't know is, I don't think this is as complicated as it sounds on that page. That page makes it look like we have to create all new programs and we're doing something different. When, when reality is, we have things in place currently that are already dealing with these issues. I'd just like to recognize that we, we've already, we've already been involved in providing services to this community. We're already involved in prevention. We're already involved in treatment. We're already involved in, and everything we're, we're trying to do. We're not, we're not, it's not like we're not at the table providing these services today. We are. And my question is, if this money is there to supplement what we're providing to offset the cost of the taxpayers, to me, that's, what's the, that's the point of these settlement funds in the first place. And I think, I think the entire community needs to recognize, we actually have a lot, a lot going on here already. Thank you, everyone.
Okay. Brandon, we'll get you going. There's a hard stop at 11:40 because you're presenting to the city of Wichita right after us, I believe. So we've got about 10 more minutes to move through these slides, then we can hold the questions at the end, that way we can get you moving.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, commissioners. I just wanted to quickly call out that in this slide deck, if you all want to review before an on-bonk meeting where you continue this discussion, if you're wanting to see what prevention actually looks like per the consortium recommendations, go to the goals. That's why I have this slide up. This is talking about school-based prevention. It's talking about ESPERT, which is a really evidence-based prevention strategy in medical settings. And it's also talking about a lot of the law enforcement wraparound services that the sheriff just shared. So there's some other examples to help folks really think through what prevention can entail in the addition of things like naloxone distribution. So go to the goals, you'll get a little bit more info. I'm going to move us forward here to make sure we can get through the rest of our slides. And I'm going to do this pretty quickly since we're just a tad behind. So next up, we are going to just briefly walk you through the implementation work plan. There is a fully fleshed out work plan in the strategic plan spreadsheet that gives you the nitty gritty details here. But we've divided this up into a handful of phases. I believe there are six of them. Phase one includes activities that you need to consider for actually standing up the process and infrastructure that you need to be able to implement the plan. That's a lot of the governance discussions that we were just talking about in addition to some of the logistics. Who's going to staff it? How often are we going to meet? What's our evaluation plan? Phases, phases two and three are directed towards implementing the goals that you choose to fund in your strategic plan. Remember, we have four strategies. Each strategy has very specific goals that we are recommending that you fund. So phase two, you're going to pick about half of them and you're going to bid them out. Phase three, you're going to start the evaluation process. Evaluation is very circular and iterative, so you'll see this again in phases four and five, where you are implementing the second chunk of goals, the goals that you didn't hit the first round, and then evaluating those goals as well. This gets us to phase six, which is at the end of about a five-year planning process where you would conduct kind of a overall audit of the strategic plan itself and the programs that you chose to fund. At this point, this entire process can reiterate and start over again with the remaining funds that you have. I want to be really mindful of time, so I'm going to hand this off to Burke to talk about communications, evaluation and partners before we conclude with you all. No, there's a lot more info about implementation in your deliverables.
So we have provided a communications plan. The, the way to think about this is, this is communications about the strategic plan itself. We think it's important for you, city and county, to engage with the community as, as decision makers. You want to inform general public about what's going on. So it's not So it's not communications related to projects that you're going to fund. It's not, it's not prevention, it's not treatment. This is about the strategic plan itself. And in this plan, again, kind of a menu-based approach. You can do, choose to do things and not choose to do others. We've outlined or suggested key audiences for your communications, specific outcomes or outputs, communication channels like social media, government websites, that kind of thing, and also some key messaging and timelines. So just to know, as part of the strategic plan implementation or roadmap, you have recommendations around communications. Again, kind of keep coming back to this. The principles here are to ensure a high level of transparency, accountability, and sustained stakeholder engagement. You want the general public and your stakeholders to know what's going on, how you're spending this money. Are you having success? Where are you having failure? And where are you learning from all that? Evaluation, again, this is about evaluation of the strategic plan, but it's also evaluation recommendations on things that you are going to fund. So for the funded projects and programs. So we have recommendations around that. It's a fairly tight evaluation plan. It identifies metrics or measures for the strategic plan itself as well as metrics for potential activities. We also make some suggestions around how you would go about regularly collecting data, monitoring data, reporting data, and some of the data sources that you already have and how you'd report out on that, as well as some timing around that. Again, menu, you can choose to do some things and not to choose to do others. But we wanted to basically hand something to you that you could start if you wanted to, evaluating what you're doing and evaluating funded projects and programs on day one. Finally, we wanted to provide a list of partners. These are organizations that were both involved in the consortium process. These are also organizations who maybe should be involved in a process in the future. These are organizations and people who can support what you're doing, whether or not they're part of the consortium. And also a list of organizations that could be potential vendors, potential projects that you're going to fund. So we try to capture as best possible the universe of all these types of, we'll call them partners. And we hope that you'll consider this a dynamic document. You want to keep adding to it, refining it. And there's some level of detail in this document about who they are, what they do, their website, primary points of contact, the capacity that they have to participate in opioid response activities, that kind of thing. So it's not just a list of names. We provided you some detail around that. So that's kind of wrapping up these other roadmap parts of the strategic plan. Back to you, Rihanna.
Thank you, Burke. Okay, folks, that is the end of our deck. I know that we flew through this kind of last section. So if folks wanted to dig in a little bit deeper to implementation and what that might look like, what that might look like in our remaining time, happy to do so. At this point, though, we want to extend a note of gratitude for letting us present to you all today. Shout out to Sheriff for the ongoing support of this consortium. And we are here for questions with whatever remaining time we have together.
Okay, well, thank you so much for all the work. I know this has been quite a process for the last year. A lot of people have been involved. And I think we're going to get a list of the consortium so we can communicate with those community groups. And I'm looking, before we get into final questions, I'm looking at the implementation work plan and with stage one, phase one and two. So I guess my question, Rusty, what's next steps? Is it the en banc so we can try to figure out governing strategy and such? Is that the very next step?
There's been some discussion whether we want to workshop that before the en banc here so that you can, you can digest the documents that they talked about, which I will get to you, and whether you want to have internal conversations before you go to the en banc. Or I suspect whether at the en banc or not, there's going to be another internal discussion. I need to talk through that.
Okay, well, this is a very comprehensive report that was given, a lot of work that was done, a Stedman group and a collaboration. So there's a lot here to unpack. And I think obviously first is that governance strategy, but that has to be in relation to what we want to accomplish, which governance strategy works best. So I think you're right, that's probably next.
We envision perhaps an internal conversation.
Yeah, I agree. Yep, that's, I agree. I don't know if it's some of the staffing of sorts, but we'll work through that piece. But we got a lot to work through here. Any final questions for Stedman Group? Commissioner Wyszyn?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And thank you for the presentation incredibly thorough. And thanks for all the work you've been doing over the last year-ish or whatever. And Sheriff Easter, again, your contribution is valuable for the sake of our, of our new commissioners and the public. You know, it was a decision made to combine the city and the county funds into one fund. And so we are challenged with, as a group, between the city council electeds and our electeds. That's, that'll be the decisions that we make on which direction and which buckets go where and how and all that. So it will be a, that's, that's the rules that we're stuck with because we made a, we made a decision to combine these monies in this community into one. And so not one entity, from my perspective, gets to make the whole decision. And it's going to be a group effort that we'll come to. So that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Wise, Commissioner Howie? Okay, I want to formally thank you guys again. Brianna, Burke, thank you so much. We appreciate the work you guys have put into this. Won't be the last time we talk, but this presentation was incredibly helpful to get us launched into these first phases. So thank you again, Sheriff. Thank you again, contribution. We are good. See everybody tomorrow morning, 9:00 AM.
Thanks, all. The pleasure is ours.